Assisted with that. So the collaboration amongst the, the membership as noted in the table has been strong and greatly appreciated by the co-chairs and so we thank them for that. The collaboration is seen by the endorsement of the, the membership. The spinoffs enable us to enjoy a vibrant and diverse community. We recognize that students are a key part of our community. We want to welcome them and wish them great success as they spend their years here. This integration also in success also includes integration into our neighborhoods and where we work and play as well. Our neighborhood strategy also speaks to the need for strong community through a sense of belonging, cohesion, inclusion. It truly speaks to being a good neighbor and a good citizen. Unfortunately, large street gatherings and parties are not in alignment with these strategic directions. As being in the on Ezra Avenue, it's maxing out and we are at a tipping point that needs to be addressed. In terms of reputational risk, the behaviors don't reflect the values of the community or its institutions, creating that reputational risk for all. And I would say as well, the image of those that are participating on this street are being, could be and can be impacted as well. In terms of the cost, we realize they are increasing and they're not sustainable. And money that is being spent on that could clearly be used for other initiatives in the community, whether it's around community programs or initiatives as well. The crowd behavior as seen at the most recent events and also at St. Patrick's Day are of concern and are escalating. The task force has set several goals to measure success, enhance community and personal safety, creating peer-driven culture change. I'll speak more to this and the importance of that. Being cost-effective, financially sustainable and operationally feasible, yielding positive outcomes for the stakeholders collectively. So the path to achieve all of these successes seems high, but it will require the ongoing strong collaboration amongst the, the partners and all parties here tonight and beyond. Thinking outside the box will be needed and a multifaceted approach will be required. In terms of the consultation today, I want to take some time to focus on the, the research and the, the work that the task force has done to better understand the problem and the mindset around those attending. So we've held the World Cafe shortly after St. Patrick's Day last year. Some 50 student leaders from the various institutions joined in and we had a conversation and that feedback is noted in the report. Richard Ibach and his team have engaged those participating in pre-surveys, during surveys and post-surveys with the recent St. Patrick's Day. And has also done work on a literature review to understand any precedents or other points of view. We've received multiple inputs from the neighborhoods and the community as at large and also through our Engage Waterloo survey that we undertook, we have received some great feedback. So all of those are provided in the report document before council tonight. And speaking to the last point here about early successes, I just want to thank some of the task force members who have advanced a number of initiatives and I just want to acknowledge those too. They're also noted in the report. With respect to homecoming itself, the Ontario University Athletic Association is aligning the schedules better. That was one initiative that we had talked about now this year, we'll see that. So to minimize student travel between these homecoming events. So for example, coming up on the 28th, Guelph is also hosting their homecoming the same day as Waterloo. As well, with respect to municipal bylaws, this council had the opportunity, several members had the opportunity, as you're aware, to present some bylaw strengthening proposals at the AMO conference to the minister. I understand that those meetings were successful. The recommendation back from the minister and his team is to work collectively with the other university towns and cities that are facing similar issues, come forward with some recommendations in terms of those bylaw improvements that are being sought specific to the municipal act. As well, a third point, just to emphasize around these successes that we see, there's a number of collaborative meetings going on across the province at different levels, whether it's through the police chiefs and their conversation on this matter, the bylaw directors having a conversation across the province. The universities themselves are chatting about this and addressing that at a president and vice president level, I understand. As well, the town and gown representatives at a provincial level are, are talking about this. So much conversation and which will help move the needle on this. In terms of outcomes from the research that have occurred, I want to speak to what we're seeing and the, what we're getting back is a key point around the rite of passage, this being an iconic event. The event size attracts an even larger crowd as well as what we're seeing from the research. You take a look at this word cloud before you and it's also in the report, but it speaks to the reasons why those people participating want to attend, whether it's fun, the friends are doing it, there's a party time, they like to drink, the experience, the school, the people and one of those key words there, tradition as well as front and center. More importantly for the task force, and I think the work at hand is understanding the reasons why people do not wish to attend, whether it's outcomes are, you know, it's you're too busy or it's crowded, there's risk of being sick, you can be drunk, there is police presence, there may be no reason at all. And I would like to say if anybody has influence on that biggest one around weather, just come and see the task force as, as soon as you can, but I don't think that's a reality. So the, the work of the task force will continue. Other key comments and findings we're, we've received and, and wanted to summarize, visitors are staying with locals, we saw in some of the conversations and understand that. The neighborhood wants the gatherings to stop, attendees should pay for the costs. The broader public is mixed on the desired outcome, about 50/50. Broader public views on the gathering are such that it's an expensive burden. Also, is there an opportunity for charities, not-for-profits and others to have a role? So those are coming, some of the thoughts moving forward in terms of what the research is telling us. In terms of where the task force is at with all the hundred ideas that we've received, there's really four key themes around the operational enhancement, a change management theme, a financial theme and a communications theme. The focus on the first theme of operational enhancements really speak to the need to reduce the impact of the crowd size. That's the number one priority of the operations team and the task force. This first theme speaks to the concept noted there as SEPTED, so that's Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. So design initiatives, built form initiatives on the street can help change the direction, we believe. I'll speak to some of these more in the pilot initiatives, but there's also parking restrictions as well as bylaw emphasis there as well in this theme. The second theme speaks to the need to refocus and prevent these unsanctioned gatherings from occurring in their current form. There's a strong need for collaboration and multifaceted phased approach to bring about the needed change. The one silver bullet approach the task force recognizes will not work. All the tools in the toolbox will need to be used. We need to address the rite of passage that I spoke to earlier and the, this change needs to be a focus of the communication plan and needed participant engagement. Last bullet, we'll see the task force having a discussion around rebranding and altering events associated with street gatherings. From my perspective is how is good citizenship and strong image portrayed if these events continue in one form or another? Furthermore, recognizing finances are a key consideration, the task force will examine alternatives in this area. The task force does note that some further investment may be needed to assist with the change. With respect to the fourth theme, communication plan, this needs to be a key focus as we move forward. We heard loud and clear from the participants that no one important to them is telling them not to go. So that's where we need to put our focus. A plan is needed that has peer-to-peer messaging. We need student advocates and the silent majority to speak about the negatives associated with these events, whether it's around personal safety, personal reputation, future successes, good citizenship, better use of these funds that are being spent as well. The risks associated with these events must be communicated. In terms of the piloted initiatives that are being considered for the 28th, I'll walk you through these. The first one is around the crowd management pods. Anyone speak to that? They essentially are fenced-in locations that house a portable washroom, recycling air containers as well as garbage containers. This will really help to disperse the, the density of the crowd. It will address the area of, or in concern of public urination that we're experiencing as a result of this event. We'll also see the issue around litter and bottles being addressed for whether it's cleanliness, but also safety of participants and first responders. These pods and the goals of these pods will also enable the first responders to do their job more effectively. Also with respect to the parking restrictions that we're moving forward with, to advise council that we will be moving forward with a no overnight parking exemption that will no longer be permitted over the weekend of homecoming as well as within the area. No parking will be enforced during the, the event. As well, warning signs will be posted throughout the area. We want to ensure people understand that these, this is an unsanctioned event and the risk as well. One of the comments during some of the interaction with the student population has been directly to me is that I did not know this was an unsanctioned event. So clearly we want to communicate what, how and what these events are. We can see, we foresee forthcoming bylaw changes specific to our nuisance bylaw, which will amend the issue around music and noise during the daytime hours. So that'll be forthcoming at a later council meeting. Around court summons, I want to note to council that this is a new tool in the toolbox for our municipal enforcement officers that we will be using. The need for someone who infracts a law, municipal law and the need to come for a court hearing will be available to the municipal officers versus one of the set fines. The last point reiterates the importance of communication. What's noted there respectful today, sorry tomorrow, is a, an update to the door knocker campaign that we will be focusing on closer to the event. The outlines of these changes that have noted in the pilot, the pilots will also be noted and communicated. We'll also be going and advancing what peer-to-peer social media quick sends might look like at this time. So we have some opportunities to see that move forward on the 28th. So in terms of the goals associated with these pilots for homecoming 2019, it's really around to reduce the impacts of the crowd density and improve overall community safety. But moving forward, the task force recognized that these pilots will inform and help to bring forward the recommendations in 2020 around refocusing and preventing these impacts of unsanctioned public gatherings. Terms of the timelines, just to reiterate those to council, with the homecoming initiatives, the pilot debrief, the work of the task force members and the final approach early 2020. In terms of the work of the task force, just to summarize, some key questions to the membership will be around what you will be bringing towards implementing any recommendations coming forward. Where do you see the change needed? We'll go a little deeper with the conversation. We'll look at the ideas that have come forward from the public, rank those against the decision criteria and our goals and advance our report. So in terms of the presentation, I just wish to conclude here and give opportunity for council to ask questions of myself or the task force members. And on behalf of the task force, thank you council for allowing us to provide this interim update on the work of the task force.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, for your report. And I'd like to thank all the, on behalf of council, all the task force members who are here in chambers tonight, as well as the neighbors and the community. So you, does council, I'm sure there's some, a few questions from council before we bring up our, our delegation. So who wants to start? Counselor Bonagor, the Uptown Counselor?
Through you Chair Vif. I would also like to thank the task force. You've been handed one of the toughest challenges that we're dealing with as a city. So if I may, I'd just like to have a bit of a statement and then ask some questions. So students tell us that they want to have fun and feel connected with each other and their community. That's very worthwhile. Those are great things to do, but it's not the role of the city to provide the events that make that happen. The city of Kitchener doesn't run Oktoberfest, which is often held up as an example of how these things can be done. So the city of Waterloo should not be running St. Patrick's Day on Ezra or any other gatherings on Ezra. To me, and what I've heard loud and clear from constituents in Ward Seven, is that the current approach of unsanctioned parties with price, with costly safety precautions is coming at too great a cost. For the financial costs, we spend a ballpark of a million dollars a year on these illegal street parties. And that's in a region that is dealing with chronic homelessness, an opioid crisis, climate change and more. This money can be so much better spent for personal safety. You know, I've been told by people in the sector that reports of sexual assaults rise after St. Patrick's Day. And those are just the assaults we know about. It's not the people who go home to that other town and report there. It's not the many people who choose not to report. So are we willing to tell these victims of sexual assault that they are acceptable collateral damage so that some students can have fun? I don't think so. I mean, I understand that most people who attend, they're well-intentioned, you know, they're, they're, they're good kids, they're good adults, they want to have fun, they're not wanting to cause these big problems. But it's becoming patently clear that the financial and social costs of these events are just not acceptable. Our city has bigger priorities and it's not the role of the city to be enabling these gatherings. I do actually have some questions as well. So I appreciate again, the work you've gone into and the difficulty of the, of what you're trying to address. I have some questions about the proposals for homecoming, which is just a matter of weeks away. The proposal includes things like fenced-off pods, toilets, garbage bins, even parts of King Street closed off. The feedback you got from students, this all falls under their idea of a sanctioned event. So are our interventions that are proposed for homecoming, is this essentially sanctioning by stealth? And how do we expect people to know that this is not sanctioned? How does, how does this intervention, which to the attendees looks like sanctioning, how is this going to help us start turning the tide?
So through you Chair to the council, appreciate the, the question. I'll ask others at the, the staff table to join me in the response. So the task force did debate this question that you've brought forward. From a first priority piece, it's really around ensuring that, you know, that those that are attending are safe, but also the first responders are safe. We're trying to address those issues. The crowd density is at its peak. Based on best practices and the work that Superintendent and his team recommend, this is where we need to go in terms of easing that pressure. As I noted, it'll address issues around public urination, but also the risks around litter and bottles, et cetera. It'll also enable those first responders to do their job better. And that's really the task force discussed this, the operations team discussed this. We need to address that. Then the full basket of other initiatives and need to come forward. In terms of clarifying that it's still unsanctioned, that's a goal around the communication plan. That's a goal around whether it's signage, the door knockers, the, the media response that we're having at this time. We are clear to say that these events are unsanctioned. I'll ask Superintendent Bursey anything else to add on that front?
Thanks. The only thing I would add is just to provide some clarity on the purpose for the closing of King Street. That's solely for the purpose of paramedic services to be provided with a safe and secure space to set up their casualty collection point. We found with the growth in the crowds that they're simply not able to function safely and effectively at the base of Ezra Street. They need to be provided a location to be able to do that, to deal with the significant number of patients that they're encountering for these events. And we're finding that's the best solution going forward to provide them with that space.
Thank you. I'll also add the, the importance of the bylaw enhancements that we are initiating and communicating specifically around court summons will reinforce the message that it is unsanctioned. The nuisance bylaw enhancements will assist with that direction as well. So I want to end the overnight parking, the parking elements too, speak to that this event isn't in a sanctioned form at all. If we were sanctioning it, those items would be enabled more. We would provide parking, we would be providing other initiatives. So I trust that answers some of council's question.
It, it requires a fair level of nuance on behalf of the attendees to understand that whether or not you get a parking permit is, dictates whether it's sanctioned or not. So for people from out of town who aren't even receiving our communications, this is again, going to be problematic. So when we are talking about communications, the students told us that dire warnings about the, the fines they might face and the repercussions that they might face actually work better than the safety and respect messages that previously had been shared. So can you tell us a bit how our communications are going to change going forward in light of that?
Yeah, I can do so counselor. So the task force, around the task force, there's some key leads and senior representation from the various institutions and membership that are experts in communication. We're going to drive their understanding of the issues and the tools available. If we need to go to some other experts that understand the demographic more specifically, we're going to do that, we are going to do that. We're having that conversation, how do we target the message specific to the people who are coming? We really want to key in on that and understand if there's a subset around that group that we need to target individual messages to the likes that they have, we are going to go deeper on that. We've met recently with a, a group that is developing an app and they have some ideas and how they can reach their peers. We are listening and that there may be some items within their offerings that we could deploy even this homecoming.
So when people do talk about these gatherings, a number of people point out to me, you know, the protections of, of, you know, in our, you know, our right to gather. But there are, there are no legal protections from my understanding for these kind of gatherings, like protections, the legal protections exist for peaceful assembly. And last time I was on Ezra on St. Patrick's Day, that, that ain't it. So I don't want to be dictating what you should be looking at. I'm more asking about what, what options have been considered. The students say they want to have a communal event, they want to relieve stress, they want to do something fun and great. I mean, did you explore the idea of a tandem approach where a separate event is organized by someone other than the city and Ezra Street people are moved on and, or arrested just to keep that street clear? Was that considered and why, like what were the reasons against it? I think that's what residents would really like to know.
So to the counselor, that's an area where we're still exploring and that's one of the ideas that have come forward and so the task force is assessing that and trying to understand what, what that could look like. Myself and the co-chair has, have put out some leads to understand that, whether there's a BIA connection, a connection with other organizations in the region. We did even have some groups come forward that said, hey, here's my idea about a festival or a cultural event. Yes, we've listened, we've connected with them, we plan to reconnect and go a little deeper on what alternatives could look like. Speaks to the point I had under change management initiatives and what this could look like. We still have work to do.
Finally, I have some questions for the university. Should I wait? Are we going to be hearing from them separately?
Not separately, counselor. So if you have a question for the university, that can be received now.
Or I could let everyone else ask their questions of staff and then perhaps I could ask that afterwards? Oh, go ahead. Okay. So I'd be curious to know if any or all of the universities are interested in running the events that their students so seem to want.
I'll ask David McMurray from WLU's representing the university and allow him to start off and I can add to it.
Thank you very much for the question. The straight answer is no. The university is not interested in the term owning the event. We think that's counterproductive to the whole concept of what's taken place over the years as this event has grown. Our interest is to continue to work in partnership and in tandem with the task force to try and create positive change. Owning the event in our minds simply creates more of an attraction against what we stand for in terms of our academic purpose and our mandate. We have considered and actually tried alternative events in the past. It was recommended by our students' union several years ago to pilot a alternative event. It was a tent that took place on the parking area beside the Granite Club and it was very successful. What it did was attract more people who also wanted to attend Ezra Street. We did that in partnership with the student leaders, with the city. And while it was a gallant effort to, to change the attraction to Ezra, it actually increased the, the attention.
Was, sorry, I wasn't here when, when that was attempted. I don't, I wasn't on the street when that was attempted. Was there concurrent additional presence on the street to move people along when that BIT event was held?
Yeah, there actually was. It was a very well orchestrated effort with police and fire prevention bylaw controlling the crosswalks on Albert Street in an attempt to, to redirect traffic from Ezra. And when we asked the students, the students basically said, this is great, there's two events that we can attend now. So any, we've also in the past approached business owners in Uptown Waterloo, looked at options to Waterloo Park. St. Patrick's Day is the busiest day of the year for licensed establishments. There was no interest whatsoever in expanding efforts because they're full and there's lineups and it was just seen as, as counterproductive to switching the whole concept or culture, so to speak, of, of unsanctioned street gathering.
And I know that it's not just Laureate students who are attending. You don't have that many students. So this is an issue that involves all of our tertiary institutions and colleges. It is closest to your school though. And I'm wondering, Laureate has prided itself on its social scene. There has been communications from the university, but also a time from student associations that really pump up the, the social side of attending Laureate. I'm wondering if you or someone could tell us if or how that communication and that presentation is, is changing?
Yeah, I think I'd probably start with our, our mission of higher education is holistic development. We promote academic quality, cognitive development, but also becoming great Canadians and good citizens. And that's a part of the history that's been a hundred plus years from the early days of Waterloo College. We believe in developing the person and, and that's, that's our, our mission and our mandate. And in doing that, there's acceptable behavior and not. We have, we're proud of the rankings that we've achieved in terms of student satisfaction, in terms of student engagement, student graduation and success and career development. Those are the kinds of things that we're promoting and we actively discourage this. We've come out more recently with the absolute unacceptable behavior that we've seen take place with fire in the street, for example. There'll be no patience, no tolerance for that whatsoever. Any Laureate student that's involved in any kind of activity associated with criminal behavior will be dealt with seriously associated with a student code of conduct. So I think, you know, quickly our summary is we, we're, we're all about creating good people, good citizens and being a good neighbor. good people, good citizens, and being a good neighbor. And that's why we've been involved with this from the start. A lot of our students leave the city at St. Patrick's Day. They don't want to have any part of the fact that there's thousands of people coming here. They feel unsafe. We've talked recently about the silent majority speaking up and that's an avenue, a tangent, I think, that we need to promote even more so. A lot of students don't want to be associated with the kinds of activity we've seen more recently that brings a reputation against their futures, kind of pictures that may be taken, that an employer might see, or questions that might be asked about their student life and their intentions and their quality as an applicant professional. So I think that's an approach that we need to, I've talked with our student union, undergraduate union, our graduate student association. They feel very strongly about that. And I think that's a piece of the task force discussions that we'll want to enhance as much as we possibly can.
I know that the neighbors would appreciate the efforts to be good neighbors and given the increase in kind of US college-style parties coming across the border and largely centering around this part of town, I can strongly encourage you to keep going with those efforts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Hanmer, please.
Thank you, Chair Vithru, through you. I guess tomorrow, I'll start with Mark and then carry on. And thank you to Councillor Bonnagard for your opening statements. I think many of us are in agreement with what's happening and that we do need to find a way forward that improves again the reputation of our city and also the academic institutions as part of it. And it's not a safe situation that we're in right now. I'd like to also say thank you to the task force for all the work that you've done right now in getting us to this interim report. It seems that you've done a lot of work in reviewing different opportunities and aspects. I'm sure many people would be hopeful that we've got solutions right now, but it does take time to try those out. So a couple of my questions are more general and then I do have a couple of questions if I might, Chair, to Laurier, to Professor McMurray again. So I was intrigued by the comments about this upcoming homecoming is going to be a testing time and ultimately probably that this success will be everything runs smoothly and there aren't any incidents and things like that. Are there other kinds of things that the task force is hoping to see out of the pilot and the parameters that you've put in place to ensure the public safety?
So thank you, councillor. Going back to the goals of what council or the task force sees as success, I'm just going to turn those. Community and personal safety, that's an ongoing measure. Peer-to-peer culture change, that's what we want to see and that's what we're testing out in one area. If some messaging can start at that level, what is the influence on that? Are we seeing change with that? So that's what we're hoping to test and get some sort of definite outcomes in that area and see how that can influence the conversation moving forward. That's, I think, the biggest one that we, beyond what's noted, are going to be physical on the street. We want to really measure some initial opportunities around that peer-to-peer communication that we need to see starting around the issues, the risks, and image issues as well and start that. But also the education around the consequences of participating and doing illegal activity as well. So we're hoping that through that peer-to-peer messaging, that's where we can see some sort of non physical built form pieces on the street. We can get an understanding how that messaging is working.
A follow-up question to that. As the council liaison on the Town and Gown Committee, I am aware that we've got representatives from the various student associations. Are they, though, the individuals you're turning to for the peer-to-peer messaging and assisting with that?
Yeah, so great question as well. They are on the task force to help with that messaging. Vice President McMurray noted that as well at his level. I've got the same understanding and communication from U of W. We know Conestoga College is engaged. The reps are here from the various student associations and they're working with us. They're bringing forward ideas. They're participating on the conversation to the solution. So they're helping out as well, but we need to go one step further than that and that those who have a large social media following to have conversation with them to see how they can influence the change. And that's really around those who are important to them influencing their decisions to participate. And that's a key piece that we need to work on and advance.
I think the change in attitude and change in approach is really important and the peer-to-peer way is one way to get going with it. So I encourage you to continue looking at methods that that can work. My next couple of questions are really to Vice President McMurray, if that's okay. Sorry to put you back on the spot and thank you for coming. My questions are really around this upcoming homecoming event. And I think it's really appreciated that Laurier is trying to sort out how how things can work differently with the task force. And as you mentioned in response to Councillor Bonnagard's questions, things do need to change and you are going to continue working on those measures. It appears that a number of the other universities across the province are looking at different ways of how their homecoming activities are actually carrying out. Can you talk to us a little bit about whether Laurier is considering that or what's in the future plans?
Yeah, I can. Thank you for the question. We have a new Vice President advancement, external relations, who's with us tonight, Jason Kuhn, who struck a special task force of our own internally to look at homecoming, its history, its impact, and of course, some of the successes as well as the challenges that take place. That meeting is happening on Thursday and it's a representation that's wide, including student leaders. And I think it's something that we have to look at very seriously. Homecoming and its roots is for alumni to come back and to engage, to be informed, and to help support the institution, again, for the history that we've had. And it's been very, very successful in that way. I can't share with you exactly the number of thousand of alumni that come back. The numbers are very significant and the events stretch from Friday through Sunday. So our quick assessment of homecoming for the reason that we have homecoming is one that's very worthwhile for institution. Obviously, we know the challenges that come with a successful homecoming and the recent street gathering phenomenon that's taken place on Ezra when you attract a lot of former students back together with students that are here. We're concerned about the gathering that's taking place and the numbers that are increasing. So looking at alternative events, we're very cognizant of what other universities have tried. University down the 401 to the west has had some significant challenges associated with canceling homecoming and a false homecoming created by students that have gathered to create even more dangerous kind of situation in opposition to cancellation. University up the same 401 to the east has canceled homecoming for years, brought it back on odd and even days to try and separate the crowd. So canceling homecoming is not a simple solution. And we've seen the results of that create absolutely worse conditions. So I think the solution is to continue to stay the course with the task force on unsanctioned street gathering as it is, whether it's St. Patrick's Day, whether it's September fall opening term or whether it's homecoming. I think we're stronger together. We've worked collaboratively and supportively. We know what works and what hasn't. Fortunately, the efforts have resulted in a safe situation and we fear the day that something worse happens. So we're trying to do everything we possibly can to prevent that.
Prevent that. And I think we all appreciate those sentiments because we certainly don't want to have anything more tragic happen, for sure. I'm curious. Laurier has more than one campus. And are you noticing any similar kinds of things happening in Branford campus, for example?
Not of the same kind. I mean, historically, if you look back in Waterloo, and I've been here since the mid 90s, the housing situation has changed quite a bit in Waterloo and it's quite different in Branford as well. So those that can remember the days of backyard keg parties, for example, and the lodging licenses that tried to restrict that. I mean, that was the worry of the time when hundreds of students would gather in the backyards. Now, the student density is such in a very small footprint that the housing has gone vertical and the density is very significant. Perhaps one of the largest, if not the largest, in the country associated with our two universities. In Branford, our student population is about 3,000. And we do provide guaranteed housing to first-year students and upper-year students. The housing is really spread throughout the community. We've had the odd occasion where there's a house in particular that we've had to approach in terms of disturbance that kind of reflects the past that we've had in Waterloo. That's probably the best example that I could share with you.
Just a smaller, okay. And I think my last question to you is, the report talks about one of the key things that's come up and I think that's public concern is the cost of the event or the activities and really keeping the public safe and where that cost should be borne. Has Laurier considered at all, the administration considered at all, or how do you feel about a potential levy to students or to people who are participating? Just curious. I know that's something that may be explored.
There was a suggestion that did come forward. A couple of things. We're very concerned, as the city is, for the cost of overseeing this. We're well into the $300,000 expense. And there are very significant priorities above and beyond investing in this, absolutely. We've talked thoroughly about how do we invest the funds together? As opposed to taking care of our internal campus, security matters, our residence doors, our academic building entrances. How can we best invest the funds, unacceptable as they are, together that perhaps will create more efficiencies in terms of dollars? In terms of charging a levy, the provincial government has recently legislated Student Choice Initiative where there are essential and non-essential fees that can be assessed to students. So we've gone through an assessment and a disentangling of all our fees into the categories provided by the government. This would not fit within the ancillary fee framework that would be allowed.
So maybe a non-starter as a discussion?
Even if it was passed through a student referendum. But we're, again, it's an idea that I find intriguing. I'm not sure it helps us with the unsanctioned thesis associated with this. Something that we really don't want to promote, so let's not think about charging a ticket price, if you will.
It's just an opportunity or a way to look at covering the cost because I think they are becoming quite exorbitant for everyone. And we all do have different ways that we would like to invest that money.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Chair, I do have one more question if I could. And this question actually is back to Commissioner Dykstra. I was interested to see that the task force is considering a role for charities and not-for-profits potentially. Can you talk a little bit more about that or is it something still to come?
Well, I can, to the councillor, I can just speak about the commentary of those attending. It would be good to see some benefit from that and those who are in the public comments. So that is out there that seeing some good out of the gathering would be beneficial. And that was around, is there a charity that can support this? So there is some other thoughts on how charities or other organizations could potentially get involved in that. We still need to examine as a task force.
Getting a benefit from it, not necessarily hosting it.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Basik, please.
Thank you, Thru, Chair Vithru. Definitely, I also have a question for Laurier, but I'll start with staff. They might kind of overlap a little bit. First of all, I think you should talk to Transportation about the weather. I hear they can do wonders about when leaves fall and also when snow falls, how to get it up. So that's his department. Christine was here earlier. So okay, but this is very serious. So there's so much risk involved and there are huge safety concerns, like you've mentioned, and I think everyone is taking very seriously. So I really appreciate that. I think maybe I will start with Laurier because I do think that's where I need more understanding because I've had some opportunity to hear from staff a little bit more. And so I really am curious how, and you've mentioned some of this throughout, but I need to get a bit of a more concrete picture of how Laurier conceives of its responsibility for unsanctioned public gatherings or sanctioned in the case of homecoming, but these large public gatherings that pose such a huge risk to public safety.
I'm not sure exactly where to start with that. It's a big question, but we do not endorse this kind of unsanctioned activity whatsoever. We've had a very comprehensive, thorough communication strategy at multiple levels that we've communicated. It's not a part of our purpose, which is academic. But again, also to support the development of great Canadians and global citizens. I'm not sure how much more we could express that than we have in the past. With the exception of a hard-handed response, that may very well be in the future associated with any kind of activity that violates the law. So I can't overemphasize the fact that this is something that member of the media asked me if I had a magic wand, would I make it go away? And I think the answer was pretty quick. We'd like to do that. We've also got concerns on campus too, that I'm not sure the community appreciates. To maintain our class schedule and what we're there to do, our research, our labs, there's huge expense associated with keeping the campus safe from non-students, traffic that comes and goes looking for a washroom, for example. Huge, huge responsibility that we would not have on any given day within the academic year.
Thank you. What would or do, because there is even debate about this. Some people are saying Laurier needs to take a responsibility and some people say that's not really the responsibility of of a university to deal with things off-campus. So when you say hard-handed response may be necessary in the future, do you mean a hard-handed response on public spaces or do you mean just if something occurs on the university property? And what does hard-handed look like according to the university?
Well, I'll try to help explain that we do have a student code of conduct. Not all universities have a student code of conduct. The University of Waterloo does not have a campus-wide conduct, code of conduct. The question becomes a matter of jurisdiction and where and when you can enforce that code. And it might be similar to any other public or private corporation, organization with expectations of its employees. You can imagine the litigation associated with activity that goes beyond a job or rights and responsibility of a student. So that has to be managed very carefully because the jurisdiction of such would come under question. In our case, I would go back to the fact that we've made it very clear that students involved in any kind of criminal activity, the university will take seriously, associated with its code of conduct, can facilitate sanctions associated with that that range from a meeting with a conversation that hopefully there's a learning outcome result to interim measures that would involve suspension.
Thank you. I have just a couple more. Is that okay? I'm really curious about the organizers. Like, who is making money off of this that they're not supposed to be making money off of? And how much are they making? So how do we identify organizers? And are they making money? So I'm interested in this from both a city perspective and a Laurier perspective.
Thank you for the question, councillor. In terms of, uh, the research that, uh, the task force has done, that has not been a, a specific area of, uh, research, discussion, uh, understanding that, more around the, uh, the changing of the, uh, the attitude and the approach around that. So we haven't gone into details. I don't have details to share about who is making money on this and, uh, how much, uh, at, at all at this point in time.
Because I would be surprised if people weren't making money off of this. People made money off of keg parties, and I, I assume people are making money off of this, too. Um, uh, okay, two kind of ideas, but one of the, the, um, key things that keeps coming up is this idea that students, um, uh, that were, that Laurier, that you're promoting respect, um, citizenship, et cetera, and, um, these sort of like positive messages, right, this respect, but students aren't hearing them. I, I question if students are going to hear serious, hard, safety messaging or other messaging. We are lame adults. I have a message out to my sixteen-year-old nephew right now, and he has been posting on Instagram, and he has not replied, and I have said happy birthday to him. So he has seen that message, and he is not replying. So I don't, I don't know if they're going to see any messaging, is what I'm curious about, or respond, see the messaging. So my question is, how do you get this message in different ways? And I think Laurier might be well-positioned to have something like, uh, a mandatory citizenship course, for example, where you can tackle about a whole bunch of things, but it can be about community in general, and perhaps you do a case study on Ezra, I'm not sure. But Laurier has mandatory courses in Branford for the contemporary studies, um, program, so this might be an option, just a thought. Um, and then the other is around the culture and changing the culture through communications, like giving the messaging that this isn't happening. So I'm also wondering about using university resources, um, to do a bit of a discourse analysis on all of the communications going out to alumni and students, um, to see if there are any underlying, like, partying messages or FOMO messages, for example, where perhaps the university gives a grant to, um, does an internal competition to somebody in communications, for example, or elsewhere, of course, to say what are the messages that are going through implicitly or explicitly, um, to identify potential areas for intervention. So just two ideas.
Thank you very much. Uh, this is what we need, our ideas, and our, our vice president and our associate vice president in communications are here tonight, um, whether it's a course or whether it's, uh, an opportunity for experiential learning. Um, uh, we'd like to experiment, uh, try anything that we possibly can to get, uh, students' attention on the positive side of this ledger. Thank you.
Through the chair to the councillor, if I could add to, this is, uh, an area of, again, it's, we're talking peer-to-peer, student-to-student communication, but it's, uh, the task force on the list of items to investigate is students, uh, who are studying, and what can they do through their course, uh, courses, uh, to help with this change that's needed. So that is definitely, definitely on the task force radar to see how, uh, uh, one of the, uh, specialized, uh, schools can assist us. So we're, uh, going to be investigating that more.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from council at this time? Okay. Councillor Freeman.
Thank you, uh, through you, Chair Veeth. Um, my fir- my, uh, first few questions are for the gentleman from Laurier, if that's okay, and then the others are for the chief. Um, so, um, you talked about the challenges with regard to jurisdiction around implementation of your non-academic code of conduct. Um, have you ever implemented it?
Yes.
And has it ever been related to this, this event?
Uh, not specifically, because we haven't had the occurrence where Laurier's students, student was charged criminally to respond to.
So if I understand you correctly, then Laurier waits until there's a criminal charge that comes into play before they would act, as opposed to being proactive, or?
No, actually, we reviewed a hundred and twenty-six cases, uh, last year associated with St. Patrick's Day. So any, any, um, student that was issued a provincial offence notice, uh, was followed up on through our dean of students' office and our associate director of student conduct.
And were any of those students sanctioned?
Yes, but, uh, in, in terms of the, um, range of sanctions that can happen, uh, the bulk, uh, overwhelming majority of those situations were, were a student that was, um, standing, um, in possession of alcohol, for example, and, uh, was fined for that. So, uh, the question arises, so what do you do beyond the fine? So the court summons is a new, uh, process that'll take place this year. Uh, a discussion about bad choices, uh, a reflection paper, a, um, alcohol awareness, uh, program provided by our health education. Those are the kinds of sanctions that have been taking place.
I mean, more broadly, there, there is a, there is a, a sentiment that people are certainly willing to put in emails to me that says Laurier has a brand issue that is reflected in this event. How do you respond to that?
Well, I think they need to learn more about our brand and, and who we are. This event has, has nothing to do with, if you read Laurier's, uh, values, its guiding principles, its vision, its mission, uh, the new Laurier strategy, uh, two thousand nineteen to twenty-four, um, this is not a part of our brand whatsoever.
So, I mean, more broadly, do you not think your brand is being damaged by this?
Absolutely, it is. And that's been the message this week, or last week, actually, that went out to every student. Uh, uh, we think it has a direct relationship, uh, in the view of the public that you've just mentioned, uh, in uninformed view that, uh, perhaps one student could damage, uh, by one act of foolishness. And we, we need to emphasize that even more, so we have been doing that. Uh, this, this, the, the silent majority, the students that oppose that kind of behavior vehemently are coming forward, and we're hoping to magnify that in the, in the days to come.
And, uh, my other question is, how, how would you encourage me to respond to the, the email that I got this weekend that basically says, how dare you spend any more of my tax dollars on this, on this event?
I would agree with them. So I wouldn't, I'd totally agree that this is an appropriate use of tax dollars. I'm a citizen of Waterloo. My taxes go towards this, too. I'm very much opposed to this kind of expenditure. And would, uh, offer the opportunity to engage with the task force as a community member and come forward with as many ideas as, as possible. I think that's a positive and proactive approach to creating change, uh, within a reasonable timeline that ta- the task force is, is trying to work, uh, within.
So I guess if citizens wanted to engage with this task force and send emails and suggestions, who would they send those to?
They can, uh, send them directly, uh, to me, or through your office, or the mayor's office. They can come into the task force. So glad to receive them, but, uh, any email on this, uh, conversation can come directly to me, you know, be forwarded to the task force.
Okay. So, thank you very much. I have a few questions for the chief.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chief Larkin, thank you for being here. And I, and I do want to say thank you to the task force. I know that this is not an easy issue. And, and my challenge is, is it's very hard for me to be sitting here today supporting the allocation of yet more financial resources to something that makes it appear as though we're making this party better. And, and I just don't know what to say to that.
Thank you, uh, councillor Freeman, uh, through you, through councillor Veeth, and, uh, first, uh, appreciate the opportunity, uh, to be here this evening and support the work of the task force, um, and understand your concern about the financial implications as well as what appears to be, um, by guise sanctioning an event, but it is anything but. Uh, but as a police service, we have the responsibility to ensuring public safety. And when we're aware of events, uh, rallies, protests, uh, pop-up, uh, street takeovers, or, uh, what we know will be a planned event for homecoming, we have a responsibility to plan. That's our fiduciary responsibility under the Police Services Act. Uh, it's my responsibility to the Police Services Board, and so hence, uh, we work very stringently around actually trying to manage the different issues. You've heard from Mr. McMurray, and, um, we've had much fulsome dialogue in this community over the number of years, uh, but we have to ensure we have the resources, uh, prepared and ready to respond. And, uh, we've been doing that since October twenty-seventh, uh, with our project Safe Semester. We've had a number of pop-up events over the last, uh, uh, ten days or so, uh, where as a police service, we've reallocated and redeployed resources. Uh, but the reality is, is this happens, uh, you know, almost every single day across the region where we're moving resources to deal with, uh, impromptu gatherings or different protests or different issues. Clearly, the unsanctioned piece is something that has become the norm in our community. It's unacceptable. We all recognize that. Um, and so, um, Superintendent Bursey, uh, I do want to take a moment. I'm not sure that our community recognizes, we probably have the premier major event planner in our police service. The work that we're doing as a community, the work that we're doing in partnership with the city of Waterloo, the regional Waterloo, the universities, is second to none in this nation. Uh, other police services are coming to our community, are reaching out to our community to see how we're managing, uh, this amount of work. And so, uh, although, uh, you know, it's unacceptable and there's all these different pieces, I do want to look at some of the different pieces, you know, our collaborative efforts with regional Waterloo paramedics, Waterloo bylaw, Waterloo Fire Department, our integration, and the way that we do work is second to none. Uh, but your point around allocating resources or not, um, I have a responsibility. And, and, you know, I don't, I obviously, I look at our budget, I look at our financial line, it's something that in today's world, in our current provincial, uh, atmosphere, something I'm very concerned about is the financing of public safety and policing, and I would much rather allocate these monies to more pressing, real issues. But the reality is, is that on September twenty-eighth, we know we're going to have an issue. The reality is, is that every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, we have a vibrant entertainment district in the city of Waterloo that requires police resources to manage and to control. That's the cost of a community our size, and that's the reality, but I cannot simply say I'm not going to send any resources there, or I'm just simply going to let things happen. Uh, that would be irresponsible and neglectful on my part. So, uh, the recommendations from Superintendent Bursey and, and the task force, uh, you know, we did consult with the task force, um, full transparency, the, 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 uh, the pods and the different, uh, pieces that we're recommending are something that for the last two years, uh, we've been arguing, uh, and, and, uh, having discussions with Commissioner Dykstra, saying we need to do this, and the city's been pushing back, saying no. Uh, and finally, we got to a point with the crowd density from last year's St. Patrick's Day around even the closure of King Street. We need to make sure that our public safety workers, also their safety's paramount. They need to do the job that they need to do. And so hence, the King Street closure and closing of, uh, the surrounding areas, uh, the addition of washrooms, et cetera, are all mitigating, uh, pieces to ensuring a safe, peaceful event. Uh, you know, we're trying to refocus this and look to the future. In the interim, there's going to be short-term pain, and there's also going to be expenditures. Uh, and we try to do that as reasonably as possible. Um, and I think that, you know, after we see what happens, uh, this, this coming end of the month, uh, we'll reevaluate, we'll go back to the task force. But there was much debate about doing this, and we understand and can appreciate your concern. Uh, what I'm asking council to recognize is that, uh, our responsibility as a police service is public safety. Uh, we have the premier major event planner in our country here, uh, who's recommending these processes, and from a chief's perspective, I've approved the operational piece. Uh, I believe that it is wise. I believe that it is the right approach. And so, uh, we are looking to contain costs and manage costs, uh, but in the interim, there will be, I think this will ramp up before we ramp down.
So one of the other questions I get asked all the time, and maybe you can help me, well, help folks understand why, I've asked the question before, but not publicly, and so I've received an answer, but people have asked me, why don't we just use water cannons to disperse the crowds?
Yeah, well, I, I can appreciate that. I mean, I think we have to recognize that we have to operate within the parameters of Canadian law. Uh, we are working, uh, we are working with, um, legal services to look at the, the gathering, uh, concept. Uh, we do live in a democratic society. Um, the police service does not employ or own water cannons. Um, I'm not in the position to direct the fire service to do those types of things, but I also think that, you know, we have to ask ourselves, you know, how are we going to resolve this issue, uh, in a peaceful perspective? Uh, and so what do we do down there? And, and I, you know, want to take a moment to recognize all the different individuals that are working down there. You know, when you look at the amount, we have a small city within a city on a municipal block.
Mm-hmm.
And the work that our public safety professionals do, city, regional members, um, is, quite frankly, something that, uh, you know, I'm very proud of. We have managed to engage in a very, uh, professional, uh, uh, concept, and we deal with issues. We issued more than six hundred provincial offence notices last year at St. Patrick's Day, uh, multiple criminal charges. We've issued more than two hundred provincial offences since October twenty-seventh in the university district. Uh, we've arrested and charged a young person criminally, uh, today for arson and arson and mischief related to the, uh, pop-up, uh, street party. And so the work that we do is very professional. It's within the guise of Canadian law. Um, and our legal team is working with the city of Waterloo legal, legal team around, are there other parameters to control the crowd and manage those pieces? Um, and we also have to apply a consistency across the way we do business across the region. We have impromptu gatherings, not to the same magnitude, the same size, but, uh, often in our region, every weekend, there's some form of protest or some form of rally that takes over streets, uh, which forces us to do road closures and manage pieces, manage different pieces, and ensure that people have, uh, the right to free speech, et cetera. Those are all the different pieces that we're doing. And so, um, you know, I can appreciate the suggestion. Uh, it's not one as a police chief that I'm interested in, in, uh, in employing. I don't think it's the way we do business in our community, and it's certainly, uh, not within the, you know, I'm not going out to procure these types of things. Um, you know, I think we need to look at how we manage the crowd, and do we want to create, uh, more civil disobedience, or do we want to manage it and work towards a successful outcome? So appreciate the suggestion, but not one I'll be actioning.
Well, for clarity, it's not my suggestion. Okay, I just, I just want to, and so the other suggestion that has been delivered to me vis-à-vis social media and other options is why we don't just take the real estate away, why we don't just completely fill the street with, with equipment, vehicles, whatever, that prevents people from being on the street, because we hear that it's all about the name of the street, and maybe you can elaborate on that.
Those are all recommendations that, uh, we are working with the task force on. Um, you know, those are discussions and dialogue we've had. Um, we're not in the process of employing them right now, but, uh, what I can tell you is those are things that we are researching and looking at, whether or not from an evidence-based perspective, they'll have any value, um, and/or will they deter, uh, or will they essentially, essentially just defer and/or move it, uh, to another location close by. And so those are things that we're looking at. Uh, we're very cognizant of that. We're also very cognizant, uh, that if we were to do that, it's likely with city of Waterloo property, and those are your assets, and so we have to work through the city to make sure that you're prepared to accept that potential risk. Um, and so, you know, we're very cognizant of those pieces, but I do believe that that's something that, uh, Commissioner Dykstra, uh, Superintendent Bursey, and the task force will review and discuss as we move along.
So the, the last question I had was, um, with regard to jurisdiction, we heard the Wilford Laurier talk about the challenges around jurisdiction. It's not on their property. Um, I mean, I don't know, can the city pass a bylaw that for that particular day or for homecoming, that particular street is the jurisdiction of Laurier?
Uh, so appreciate the, uh, the comment, councillor. One, uh, again, the laws, the legal teams are reviewing any, uh, possible solutions around such kind of, uh, comments that are coming forward, so we will, uh, I'll take that. Uh, but at this point in time, uh, that's, uh, an area where we have to do some more research, if there's anything in terms of bylaw strengthening that we can do. But, uh, the two legal forces between the city and police are examining all options around what the law can enable us to do around this, uh, event.
So the, the last comment I have is, chief, can you better help the broader citizen re-understand what you're talking about in terms of the number of people on the street? So I grew up in Woodstock, Ontario. The population of Woodstock is thirty-three thousand people. That's how many people are on the street. I heard that the density was something in the order of six people per square meter. Now, I, I, I think that's a staggering number, and it, can you, can you help unpack that?
Yeah, so I'll actually ask Superintendent Bursey to chime in, but I think one of the pivotal points, uh, in the last twelve months was, uh, St. Patrick's pivotal points in the last 12 months was St. Patrick's Day of 2018, clearly, or 2019, and 2018, moving from 2018 into 2019. The one big piece that we noticed was the density of the crowd had magnified to a point that it was difficult for public safety, first aid and paramedic and fire responders and bylaw responders to get into the crowd safely. You have seen many photos that the police service has provided or supplied, as well as local media. And that was one of the then, how do we actually manage the density? How are we able to get into the crowd? And so Superintendent Bursey is accredited in crowd management, crowd estimations, and so we put a lot of effort and a lot of scientific approach into that. To your point, when we reach the population of, you know, for example, Woodstock or Stratford, we're talking about on a, really on Ezra, but as you know, at St. Patrick's Day, this council will be aware that we finally saw some pushing into Clayfield, onto Bricker Rav, onto King Street, there were some significant pressures based on volume, density and those processes. And so that is the major cause for concern, which also leads us to implement a series of pilots for homecoming. Because again, I want to reemphasize that my responsibility, although we want to see this end, we want to see it all go away, there's no magic wand. It's a complex issue that other communities are also facing, and we're looking at a provincial and national approach as to what are the best practices learned. So there's no magic wand. So in the interim, we have to make sure that we have a safe environment for all, including first responders. But Tom, do you want to allude to some of the density components from St. Patrick's Day?
Thanks, chief. Councillor Freeman, you're absolutely right, so the figure you're quoting is pretty accurate for the densest parts of the crowds that we did see on Ezra Street. So obviously, six people per square meter is past the point of critical in terms of safety of the crowd. Once you're even getting above three or four people per square meter, that becomes a significant concern. So even a small disruption to the crowd, that sort of crowd density can have significant impact on the number of casualties that we might have if the crowd was disrupted. So hence, the number one priority for operational planning this year is reducing that crowd density. And as the chief mentioned, some of these things that we're piloting, such as the crowd management pods, their primary purpose is to help us reduce that crowd density for homecoming.
Thank you, chief, and thank you for the questions, councillor Freeman. Councillor Bodley.
Thank you through you, Chair Veeth. I might just ramble for a little bit before my question, I guess. I applaud all of the safety efforts, I applaud the work of the task force. I think that, although I understand the elements that councillor Bonagor was referring to at the beginning regarding tacit sanctioning of the event, I think to the, to the point that you referenced regarding crowd density, it is imperative that we do everything within our power to ensure the safety of the community during this day. And I think that the task force has done a good job to identify a few things in the few things that we are piloting this year. Frankly, I just, I wish we were sitting here just talking about something else. We have so many more other important things to be talking about here at the city. The fact that we have a task force with a report on unsanctioned public gatherings, but we don't have a inclusionary zoning report regarding affordable housing is embarrassing to me. And I think it should be noted to the students that did comment in the report that they didn't see that they were responsible for the cost of this event, that that's the opportunity cost of this event, is that we haven't been able to do those things, which is unfortunate. But at the same time, I also want to bring it back to the comments that Commissioner Dykstra opened with regarding the students, and I often see the reference to "the" students, and I really don't want to paint all of the students with the same brush. This is not "the" students, this is "some" students. Last week was the 20th anniversary of me moving to the city of Waterloo to attend Wilford-Laurier University. I am a Wilford-Laurier University grad. I can tell you with 100% certainty that had this event been going on when I was in university, I would have attended, and I don't think that that reflects necessarily poorly on me. I imagine the majority of people here would have attended the event at some point in time, had they, had they been at the school when it was going on. And to go back to that 20-year, 20th anniversary for me personally, when we go back to the commentary around the community connection, probably the biggest, and this is maybe unfortunate, but probably the biggest time where I felt the greatest connection to the community in my entire four years at Laurier, was during Frosh Week when I participated in Shinarama. And it'd be great if we could find a way to take that enthusiasm from the students for our community and directed towards a really good cause, if we could try and find a way at Laurier, through the city of Waterloo, to build that. I still remember to this day, I was out in St. Jacobs, and I was juggling on the streets of St. Jacobs and asking tourists, passersby, their little kids to pour bottles of water on my head to raise money for cystic fibrosis during Shinarama. And like I say, in retrospect, it's kind of sad that that was the moment where I felt the most connected to the community in the four years that I was at the university. And I think some of the efforts that we're doing with respect to the city studio project, I was at the working center last week and doing a tour, and there were some students from Laurier who were working on a program that connected them with the, with the working center and did some work with them there. And I think all of these things are really important efforts, long-term. But given that, I want to focus on, I guess, two things. I think that unfortunately, what we're going to get out of this from our friends sitting at the media desk here, is that this is working in the margins, and that we're not really tackling the problem in an appreciable way. I really hope that everything that we've got in this report works, I really do. But if you're asking me today, am I optimistic that we're going to have an appreciable reduction in this party within two to three years, as the report suggests is the goal? I, I don't see it. So I'm going to ask about two, I'm going to ask about two particular things. I know there's no silver bullet. I'm completely in agreement that there's no silver bullet, but there's two things to me that are the closest to a silver bullet, and I'd like some commentary back on them. And the first one may be for Chief Larkin, and this is going to be a repurposing of councillor Freeman's question. At what point in time is a heavier-handed police presence going to be an appropriate response?
Well, thanks councillor Bodley, through you councillor Veeth. I think there's a misperception that it's been a soft-handed approach. When you look at the amount of provincial offence notices and arrests that we do do, you know, we're enforcing provincial and criminal law. I think you have to recognize that significant crowd management, that we have to manage the crowd. And so the notion or the concept of moving along a crowd of 10,000 plus is not safe for our members, and that has to be one of our components. We want to ensure that, you know, we don't incite more than we do. So, you know, as Mr. McMurray alluded, we shared information with the university in relation to more than 120 identified students that we felt, you know, were misrepresenting or were acting in a manner that was prejudicial to the values of the university. And so we've had this sharing information, respect that they have a process to follow. So, you know, I think our notion of taking this seriously, since August 27th to now, we've laid 200 provincial offence notices, and this afternoon, we arrested the first of what likely will be several arrests in relation to the arson and mischief and, quite frankly, nonsense that occurred last week. So the notion of, you know, that we're soft-handed, if we need to change the channel on that, we can change the channel from a messaging or a communication perspective, but it's very clear, you know, we have to balance this. It's very clear when I met with all the student leaders, and I think the councillor Vasek's perspective, you know, they're not necessarily either listening or hearing or want to hear or want to listen, despite all the work that we do do. You know, I'll tell you that the meeting with the 55 student leaders was enlightening. It was, as a public sector leader, there was a lot of talent in that room, a lot of bright people, and they were very candid. And so, you know, our general experience, if I can give you the experience of the officer on the street who is dealing with these challenging times, I mean, it's very challenging when you're dealing with tens of thousands of people that have been consuming. For the most part, all of the interactions are collegial. The challenge is, is that because it's become such a phenomenon, we're attracting challenges from outside our community, other individuals that have, in my view, more evil or sinister reasons why they're coming. I think we've heard about that today, it was a couple of things that concerned me around the safety, in particular of young women, et cetera. So I think that, you know, this heavy-handed approach, I mean, we've tried to maintain the street open, we've tried to clear the street, we've had a couple of incidences in the last 10 days where we've seen the crowd grow from 400 to 500 to 1,000 to 1,500, and we've been successful in clearing the street. The reality is, when the size of the crowd magnifies, we have experts who manage the crowd and actually make decisions operationally around whether or not we should be more heavy-handed or not. And, you know, I often use the comment internally, and I'll use it publicly, is at times, it looks like we're controlling chaos, and that's exactly what we're doing. And we're doing it well, which is part of the problem. And so I can appreciate your comments that we're working within the margins, but we're trying to change human behavior, we're trying to change a culture, and those things are very challenging. So I don't think that these only silver bullets, or I don't think the magic wand particularly is police-only. I think that it's a integrated approach. I think that as we move forward, you know, if the judicial system was the only answer to all of our societal issues, we wouldn't have the issues we have in our community around addiction, around property crime, around violent crime. And so I don't, I don't see that as the only solution.
Through you, Chair Veeth, and thank you, Chief Larkin. And I do want to make it clear, I do think that the work that the police services are doing in paramedics, et cetera, is excellent, and perhaps we are a bit of a, at a loss because of how well we are, how well we are doing in some ways. I just want to, sorry, I saw that you sat down, but I have a follow-up to that, sorry, Chief Larkin. You're getting, you're getting your steps in today. But can you comment on, it would appear to me that the majority of the, the sort of more serious concerns that we have from a policing perspective are happening in the central areas of the party where police are not really able to get to today, or in the current structure of the party? And I wonder if you can speak to maybe, is that part of the justification for these pods is not just to clear access for paramedics to get in, should there be a situation that they have to do with, but also for police to get access if there are people that need to be dealt with in a more heavier-handed approach? Because I would agree that the majority of the people that are on the sort of fringes of the, of the party are not necessarily the ones that are doing the, the most damage, so to speak.
Yeah, so thank you, thank you for the question, and that is definitely one of the pieces. I mean, I think last year at St. Patrick's Day was the first time ever where we've seen behavior which Superintendent Bursey would brief up around concerning, alarming and critical, and that was, you know, we saw projectiles being thrown, so we saw whether it be water bottles, containers, beer bottles. That's the first time that we've really actually experienced that in this type of process. The concern, obviously, with that, it does create some pushing and movement of the crowd, so potentially for trampling and people trying to exit, you limit the exit points when the density is to what it's at. And so those were behaviors which were very concerning from a policing perspective, but I think I can speak on behalf of all public safety leaders here today, Chief Van Belkeberg and Chief Heptich, that it was concerning for all of us if we had to get our members in there around safety. You know, we do employ a number of different, you know, crowd management, and obviously we have a number of eyes on the crowd, et cetera. The team that Tom leads, the crowd management units from both our service and from the Peel Regional Police Service are trained in crowd management, they're trained to pick out instigators, they're trained to pick out those that we believe are problematic or troublesome, and then we extract them from the crowd and remove that instigation or that distraction from the crowd. Tom's team this year during St. Patrick's Day, quite frankly, that was problematic to get into the crowd safely, to extract somebody safely and without creating a sense of mob mentality. And I think the access and egress routes became very clogged from a human perspective. Hence, we saw the overflow onto Clayfield, Bricker and King Street where we had to shut down the lane. So Tom, I'm not sure if you want to add anything, or I captured your briefing upwards. Thank you.
Just to, not for Chief Larkin, you can sit down. I just told the chief to sit down. Sorry. The second theoretical silver bullet that I often hear from community members, and again, I'm not, I'm not necessarily advocating for these things, I'm just, I'm just curious as to, as to the consideration that's been given by the task force, since that's what we're reviewing here today, is, is the idea of sanctioning the event. And I, and I'm, again, not necessarily advocating for it, but is this something, as we move forward, that will be considered? Sanctioning the event, shutting off Bricker, shutting off Clayfield, shutting off Ezra, making sure that the density does not hit that critical six per square meter, and partnering with somebody who will take on some element of the liability in that regard? Is that something that is being considered by the task force going forward?
Through you, Chair Two, councillor Bodley, the current form definitely can't stay the course, so the task force recognizes that. In terms of suggestions that have come forward regarding sanctioning, yes, those are there and still to be reviewed by the task force, but we need to address all the issues if that would be considered in terms of policing, safety, in terms of community benefit, even if we were going to go that route. So at this point in time, the, the current trajectory is to change it, but there's still work to be done by the task force to fully assess that.
Thank you, councillor Henry.
Thank you, Chair Veeth, and I'll echo others, being positive, you know, comments towards the very difficult work that has landed in the laps of folks, some of whom had no choice but to be on this, this task force and affected, others of whom gallantly volunteered their names into the breach to try to help us put some heads together and solve this one. I want to start, chief, I saw you on your feet, you looked so good, I want to start with you, just with a couple, and then I'll go to Commissioner Dykstra, because he's, he's the one we pay directly, which is, which is useful.
And well-earned.
Yeah, everybody has to earn their keep on this one. I think that's something that we're all, we're all looking at. Chief, the first question I had, and I've heard it, you know, a number of times, that the responsibility of the police service and coordination with all of the other, you know, first responders is to provide for public safety, and that you have a fiduciary responsibility to do so. But we've also heard all of the challenges of crowd density and the need to instigate some significant measures to try to allow some, some access for crowd management. If I were a student, or a parent, or anyone that had a conversation with someone, and they were getting a perception from today that this was a safe place to go on homecoming or on St. Patrick's Day, this is a safe event, and I can feel confident because I am going to a place that is safe, is that a statement that you would concur with, that this is something that we would call safe? Or is this simply something we're managing as best we can to maintain as much safety as possible? But it is not actually a safe place, and we should not be encouraging people to go if they are looking for places that are safe?
Yeah, thank you councillor Henry, and through you, through our chair councillor Veeth, thank you for the comments, and it's an interesting notion around safety. And one of the pieces around that, I guess I'll use the analogy of, if we slide up to the entertainment district later tonight, we'll probably see anywhere from 10 to 15 police officers on a street corner, you know, mixed around. Some people will view that and their comment will be, wow, this must be really safe, there's a lot of police officers here. And then there'll be another portion say, well, this must be really dangerous, there's a lot of police officers here. And so if you look at the other night, you know, we had 40 officers on Ezra Street managing the incident, trying to clear the street. And so I don't believe that what we've seen in the last 10 days, in my view, is safe behavior. So we saw a fire, we saw behaviors which was, you know, putting people at risk, jumping over fires, having the fire service have to come in and do things, we saw bottles being tossed and thrown onto the roadways. Those are not safe events. I think we've managed an event where people felt safe and felt that, you know, relatively, we have paramedics, we have St. John ambulance, we have people helping out to ensure, we have a number of faith-based groups handing out water, handing out cookies. So we've created an environment where people feel a level of safety. There's obviously an element of safety in numbers for some people, but I think we've passed the point of public safety in the sense that we're at a critical density, the crowd is becoming much too large to... The crowd is becoming much too large to unmanage. And our perspective, or my description of the event, would be it's an unsafe place to go. In fact, we're encouraging curious onlookers who go up there to take a look, not to attend. That they're putting themselves at risk, they're actually bringing unnecessary attention. And so I think we've crossed the line of, you know, I think if you think five years ago, where it was much more of a localised event, I would describe it as, you know, relatively safe. There's still harm that can happen. You know, we see the binge drinking and some of those behaviours. We see lots of trips and falls and that. But I think I can tell you that the crowd is changing, the dynamics of the crowd are changing. You know, during St. Patrick's Day, we had identified street gang members from outside of our region, from the Greater Toronto Area. Those don't make for safe events. You know, I think that those are very concerning. Bottles being thrown, projectiles being thrown do not make for safe events. And so my message to students, parents, the universities is that it has become an unsafe event. It's unsanctioned, it's unlawful. And we're working to, obviously, you know, I don't think we're going to change it overnight, but those are sort of the messaging pieces. Which is a bit of a... I'll be quite frank with counsel, a change of tune from me as the chief. Five years ago, I think that we were managing an event which was really about student celebration, homecoming, all those types of things. And I think it's migrated past that. I think that we were kind. I think we were very compassionate as a public safety, as a community, as a police service, as well as other public safety agencies. And quite frankly, people have pushed the limit. And it's time for us now to push back and say enough is enough.
I appreciate all of that. I think that's helpful, and also describing the arc of where this has gone. And I'd say, listening to the last part of your response mirrors some of the feedback we're seeing from those 55 student leaders that you were in a room with, and the message that they've got. There is always a lag in the feelings we have today and the experience we have today that's reflected by the context we had yesterday and days before, right? I mean, we mediate ourselves in the past in many ways. Which means the arc of change takes some time as well to push past it. So looking beyond the city here, we've had only a few tangential comments about the fact that this is not a unique problem completely to our city. I'm wondering, you know, you've had the opportunity to chair large groups of police from across a large swath of the province and the country. I'm wondering what you're talking about when you gather with other police chiefs from university towns? I heard from Commissioner Dykstra earlier that the minister is looking for us to all give them one message. So I'm curious what conversations you're having with your fellow chiefs in those places, and what things we and the task force should take from that.
Well, thank you so much. And first, you know, one of the messages that I'm hearing from other police chiefs and municipalities, number one is a sense of leadership from our community. You know, the work that Mayor Jaworski and your council pulled together at AMO was pretty significant. It was a comprehensive response to government around change, of managing communities that have a large student-based population. And so one of the challenges is the work of the task force, and we have one of our research fellows with us that has done significant work. We're one of the few communities that has invested the amount of effort into researching and looking at evidence-based strategies and change. And so in one hand, we should be proud of that. In the other hand, we should be concerned because there's a lot of agencies looking at Waterloo saying, "Well, what are they doing?" And when they figure it out, we'll actually take it and duplicate it. Though, there's a couple of pieces that, you know, one, again, I do think that all of the various municipalities and chiefs got together with the universities to change the athletic schedule. I view that as a success, I view it as a win, time will tell. But I do see it as a win. The Council of Ontario Universities and obviously the AOU, OAU, did, you know, agree to do that. And, you know, obviously, there's challenges with that. So I see that as some success and some movement. But the larger pieces around, the chiefs are looking at lobbying, I think to Counselor Freeman's perspective around, can the municipality have powers around certain events, certain days, to create community safety zones where there's more punitive measures that allows council to pass bylaws, et cetera? The Ontario Chiefs are looking at whether or not we can tie driver's licence suspensions to unpaid fines of other provincial offence acts, such as the Liquor Licence Act, the Trespasser's Property Act. Right now, only licence suspensions are tied to Highway Traffic Act non-payments. And so we're looking at other sanctions. So looking around, to Counselor Bodley's perspective, around firmer approaches or heavier approaches, more tools in the toolbox. Those are some of the things we're looking at. Tom, it works with a group of crowd management and crowd managers. They're looking at the dynamics of unsanctioned events, unsanctioned public gatherings. Are there different techniques that we can employ? Are there different things that we can do to, you know, tame, disperse, those types of processes? And so there's a number of things happening. As you know, public policy does not happen overnight. You know, I think we've been dropping some very good strategies, and I would describe them as breadcrumbs with government. And I do believe that they're listening. I do believe that they're understanding some of the unique challenges that university, you know, municipalities that host universities and post-secondary institutions. Because we do have a college, we do have a vibrant college that does have some other disruption in neighbourhoods in another municipality, you know, Kitchener. But, you know, point that out. And so I think that those are some of the pieces that we're looking at. But again, I want to re-emphasise that there's not another community that has put the amount of effort into creation of a task force and the work that we're doing. And so, you know, I think that that deserves applause to the leadership of council, to the leadership of the various stakeholders that are involved in this. And to your point, you know, our preference would not to have to be sitting on one, but we are. We have a responsibility, and we're there, and moving it forward and providing leadership. So I think there's some things in the queue that are moving along that we'll start to see some success. And I think after each event, you know, so obviously after this Homecoming, you know, my recommendation to our team is to convene with all the stakeholders, and once again engage government in, this is what happened. Show them the tangible evidence of the impact on our systems, the impact on policing, fire, paramedics, our hospital, our healthcare system. We have to keep demonstrating the overall impact. It's crossed the threshold. You know, it's positioned the boundaries where all of our institutions, all of our public sectors are facing significant challenges. And there's one stakeholder that I think we need to engage even more, and that is our local school boards. Around, you know, youth, around underage drinking, underage consumption, being a good citizen, those types of processes. I think there's work to be done around that. And it may be work of the task force, or it may be work of some public sector leaders to actually engage in a more meaningful, fulsome dialogue with our school boards and the impact, particularly when these days land on non-school days, et cetera.
Thank you Chief, I appreciate all of that. And that's certainly been my experience of the years of Town and Gown, Ontario meetings I went to, that everybody, whenever I asked a question, the response was usually, "So what are you doing in Waterloo?" Since we were always significantly ahead of both getting, having the problems, and then dealing with them head-on with the research that we come to expect from a post-secondary rich city. Question next for Commissioner Dykstra. I just wanted to drill in on other changes that haven't been highlighted as much today that we talked a little bit about in terms of messaging. I know that in the past, we've run a multi-agency, you know, door-knocker campaign ahead of these big gatherings, including Homecoming and including SPD. But is that something that we are still doing this year? And if so, can you tell me how it will be different this year? If I was opening up the door from the other side and seeing people on my doorstep who are going to say things to me, what am I seeing? Who am I seeing? What message am I hearing?
Great question, Counselor Henry. So this year, we are continuing with that programme of the door-knocker. And that is, the outcomes from that will be further, and the next steps on that are going to be analysed by the operations team. If it is having the value it really needs to have, and are the efforts around that, can they be better utilised elsewhere within the scope of the operational response we have? We do see the value in that in terms of our connections on municipal enforcement end, getting out some of the messaging around what is good citizenship. We do see a value of that in terms of that messaging. But again, is that the right message? We want to evaluate through our communications team and the subset that we're going to do, is there something better? You know, social media is a trend, that we can have a better connection, Instagram, other platforms, we want to leverage and examine that. So I anticipate we'll see a shift on that programme and some recommendations from the task force on how to utilise that. In terms of the response for this year with it going ahead, the message comes from the students, the student leaders. We've had in the past, the various student unions come forward and present at the door. We have sports leads in the universities coming as well as some of the key clubs. So the message is delivered from the student voice itself to another student, and that will continue. We do have the support of, if there's a question related to police, bylaw, or fiery, for even example, we do use that as a time of education in responding to questions. So if there's a question on just safety in the home, that's where an officer, a fire officer can assist with that and respond, or we can have one of our municipal officers follow up and do some discussions with them on what they need in their residence. So we see it as an outreach now. We are in the process of re-evaluating it. The message will be different, and we're working through buy-in with the institutions as well as the union, student unions, around the specific message that will go forward.
Thanks, I appreciate that these are all sort of, you know, moving targets up to a very hard date. So I'd say just by way of comment, that I heard the... I'll back up. I mean, I've participated in a number of these over the years. I won't be able to, you know, this year, it runs in an inconvenient time in a very toddler-driven household. But hopefully I'll be back out next year with some more of that. But I've walked that beat with a community officer, and I've walked that beat with student athletes. The one that beat with the community officer, my experience was, we definitely drove a very hard message at houses that were very readily known to the community officer. In terms of, basically, this is the pre-warning against the keg party, that we know you're probably going to hold. So you don't get a warning on the day. Those were, we know that we can focus on the places that often host these kinds of things. There may be some roles for certain kinds of actions against folks that are well-known in those to deal with some of that. But the other thing is, is you're developing a message, what I'm hopeful of hearing out of student athletes and student leaders' mouths that I haven't heard in the past, is what I just heard from the chief. And that's that Ezra Avenue is an unsafe place to go, and it's an unsanctioned gathering. I think there's a shift in that kind of message, rather than remember to be safe and be respectful, or stay golden, or whatever the variations we've heard over the years. As we've seen from the student results, those are not coming through. Even if they're coming from people they might care about, the message doesn't have any resonance of change. And so I appreciate hearing some direct and different messages from key members of the community that I hope are well-communicated when we go out and talk to students, whether it's through the traditional means or through new means that we may think of over the coming weeks and months.
In response, I would just like to inform council and Counselor Henry that that is, in fact, the messaging that we are looking on the communication front. So we're just working through the details of that. I want to reiterate and also offer that beyond that door-knocker, our teams, whether it's city team, police, are proactive prior to the Homecoming Day. If we see any thread that is not in alignment, there are proactive steps being taken to ensure that, where we can, that we get ahead of any potential issue as well, and beyond just the area of Ezra Ave as well during those events.
Okay, thank you. So I know there are two more councillors have two short questions to ask, and then the mayor's going to wrap it up. But I think out of respect for our delegations, I think I'll call them now, would that be okay? So, and they've been sitting here for quite a while. First, Mike Milovic. You have, thank you for coming tonight and for waiting through all this. You have 10 minutes.
Okay, quick question before I begin. Would I have access to the PowerPoint? Is that available technology to me tonight?
I would think so, yes.
I've got a little USB. Looks like my time's going here. All right. I'll get going. Good evening Mayor Dave, counsel. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be part of the dialogue regarding large public gatherings. I have stakeholder involvement as a property owner on Ezra Avenue. This property takes direct semi-annual hits from Hurricanes, Homecoming, and St. Patty's Day. I had a thorough read of the report. Tonight, I'd like to look to share some of my perspectives and insights. And I guess, who's running the PowerPoint? Is this... Oh, okay, all right. Thank you. First, I took a look at, I noticed Chief Larkin's tone with regards to... Government recently announced funding for cameras in high-crime areas. Install cameras on hydro poles on Ezra Avenue. There should be a direct live feed to Waterloo North Division year-round. In my mind, strong, decisive action needs to be taken to curtail these riots. In examining social medias on the matter, the voters in the region and the city have actually come up with some answers and make some decisions. A strongly worded message needs to come from regional, city, and university leaders that these riots are illegal and will no longer be tolerated. And I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for your suggestions. Are there any questions for the delegation from council? Oh, sorry, Counselor Vasek.
Through you, Counselor Veeth. Yeah, you said you would like to see more consultation with landlords, and it's previously been done. So what do you think the best ways are to reach out to landlords, to collect that kind of input? And what do you think, from your perspective, are landlords willing to give in terms of time and perspective?
Well, from my, and I apologise for my voice a little under the weather here today, but without a doubt, the city of Waterloo had no issues contacting us previously. A lot of us are rental-licensed property, so we freely provide information for them to contact us, to contact us on significant event-type of days. But for this task force, I don't understand why we weren't included. To me, it makes absolutely no sense. We pay a licence fee, they send it out in the mail, they know where we live. This comes as a complete, this discussion comes as complete shock, to be honest, complete.
Okay, I think staff have duly noted your concerns, and...
Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Candice Duke-Belsham. Welcome Candice, and you get five minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening Mayor, council, and community members. My name is Candice Duke. I'm a resident of Waterloo and a former property owner of a rental property on Ezra Street. I appreciate the opportunity to address the unsanctioned large public gatherings. As background, when we first purchased the property over 12 years ago, we did so as an investment property, thinking that our three children could live there and attend a university locally. The large-scale unsanctioned gatherings that you see today did not exist back then. And today, some reports, as we all know, have stated that there have been up to 30,000 attendees or more on Ezra Street on St. Patrick's Day alone. And I feel that the number of attendees continue to skyrocket. And some people have asked, "Why am I here? Because I'm not a property owner anymore." I am a paying citizen and community member. And I am very, very concerned about what we continue to see spiralling out of control on Ezra. I am going to talk about the cost, the reputation to the community, and overall safety, from my opinion. In terms of the attendees on St. Patrick's Day, I would venture to say that many are students. The proximity of Ezra to the university area and the residences. As a previous landlord and property owner, year after year, the number of attendees continued to grow. We had to hire personal security companies to monitor the property. And I will say, some students, wearing their Wilford Laurier purple and gold shirts, loud and proud, urinating openly and defecating on our property. They would openly throw beer bottles and trash on our property and in the street. A recent article stated that the costs are well over $1 million, or approaching $1 million for St. Patrick's Day and Homecoming alone. In this day and age, and I think one of the councillors hit on this a couple, we have so many programmes that are being defunded. How can we continue to let this handle? I'm revolted by the fact, and I think you guys have all had said this, that we are here talking about this. There's so many important things with homelessness, with refugees coming to our community. There's so many important things with homelessness, with refugees coming to our community, with climate change initiatives. There was a post recently with, with the city doing a greening community initiative. Those are the things as a tax-paying citizen I would like to see happen, not this party. I understand that students need to have fun. I understand that. I, I was a student myself one time, but I sure as the heck don't think that my rite of passage is to destroy property and to go out and party and vomit and do things that we see right now on Ezra. In terms of, of the safety, as a mother, I would say that I would think twice about sending my children and my tuition dollars to this community if this continues. As a mother, I listen and I see what's going on, and I just think we are operating on borrowed time. There will be, if things do not change quickly and swiftly, I think that there will be unfortunately a fatality on our hands. So do we want the legacy of our community to be a party, an epic party place? We have a strong academic legacy here, and I'm hoping that that will continue. But I will tell you now that the reputation of being a party university is continuing to build momentum. You can Google, and the university is represented as one of the top party universities in Canada today. I commend Chief Larkin and our first responders who have done a fabulous job to date controlling the chaos. However, as the number of the attendees increase, these events are operating again on borrowed time as I've, as I've, as I've said. The mayor recently stated in his Welcome to the Neighborhood post, "We're working hard to be an equitable community, leading the world in learning, discovery, and caring. We look forward to supporting our students and working with them throughout the year." What is equitable during these unsanctioned events? I know students, again, have the right to have fun. Again, it's just spiraling out of control. And I am hopeful that the task force, thank you very much for all your time and efforts. I'm glad to hear that there are ideas. But I will say, many times as a property owner, we were invited to some of these, and again, I don't know why now not, but I'm not a property owner anymore. But I would say that ideas were definitely discussed, but I didn't really see swift action that would reduce the numbers. So I'm hopeful that these ideas will be put into place and that we will start to see impactful action to bring our community back to some peacefulness that we need. Thank you.
Thank you for, for your words. Very much appreciated. And some, are there questions for the delegation? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Okay. I'll start with Counselor Vasek. She put her hand up.
Thank you. Through you, Chair Vee. I have one comment that could be triggering, so I will just have a, share one other idea in case anyone would like to kind of turn off YouTube or leave the room for a moment. One thought is just, which I have shared with staff is around a youth strategy. So what I'm hearing Chief Larkin is the school boards are not on board, and that is a big problem. And I do know that the region was looking to this Icelandic example of addressing youth, underage youth binge drinking. And so I know that there are great partnerships there, so I'd like to just, you can speak to it for sure, but it's just, if you'd like to, if there's any work being done in that regard, I think our region overall could use a youth strategy. I think the city itself could use a youth strategy. And so, an idea, and then I do have my one other comment. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Counselor Vasek. Through you, Counselor Vee. The Icelandic model is something that the Community Safety and Well-being Regional Working Group is looking at, as well as through the recent initiative around several different initiatives. We do have some monies that possibly can be invested in that. And I do want to clarify, I mean, it's, you know, we are working with our local school boards, but I think that there's a greater opportunity to engage them in a much more fulsome perspective and actually engage them in long-term solutions. So I think they're excellent comments and one that, you know, I can certainly deliver back to Community Safety and Well-being is one of the advisory members, but I think our task force can certainly, I know that they're looking to engage our school boards much more, in a much more fulsome opportunity and a much more meaningful dialogue around long-term solutions.
Great, thanks. And maybe build on the momentum of smart cities too. Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, to Counselor Vasek, if I can also add, just to reiterate, the school board is, both public and the private board are with the task force and exchanging information, but there is an opportunity to go deeper in terms of the discussion. So just to clarify that as well.
Great, thank you. And then my second comment is that we are more than two hours into this session, and Counselor Bonagor brought up the point that there are sexual harassments, there's sexual harassment happening. And I suspect that is from catcalling to homophobic slurs to unwanted touching to rape. I believe people are likely getting raped on Ezra. And so I guess when we're talking about safety, I don't want us to shy away from, we are saying beer bottles are being thrown and people are pissing all over the city and private property, public property, and, and there's too much drinking and people are, you know, binge drinking. So we're saying those things over and over again, we're repeating them, but we have not said the words death, you said fatality, and we have not said rape. And those things really concern me. I think the more honest we are about it and we don't hide things like that, the more we're going to be able to get the key messaging across. So just a bit of a concern that we haven't actually addressed Counselors, Counselor Bonagor's point that you so eloquently raised in your opening.
If I could respond and just offer comments, I appreciate the councillors' comments and the seriousness of that and the insight that you've offered. The, the discussion with the task force has recognized those issues. And as we move forward in communication, definitely an area where we see opportunity to communicate the risks associated with those type of occurrences.
Thank you. And Counselor Bonagor.
Thank you, Chair Vee. First of all, I want to thank both of our delegates for coming and speaking tonight as well. I think you gave excellent voice to a lot of the frustrations that are shared by many residents who are affected, both in the McGregor Albert community, like Uptown North. It's, it is spreading, and I thank you for coming in and speaking to us. This is a point that came to me when someone else was speaking. So it's, it's just a message that I would like to share with Laurier. This task force is dealing with events that involve many parties, like, sorry, many parties actively, but also many institutions and groups. But homecoming is Laurier's. Homecoming is about, largely about alumni and university fundraising. And to my mind, the city is paying a lot financially and socially to manage the fallout from what is essentially your event. And I would like to urge you to take more responsibility for at least this slice of the problem and to actively pursue a culture shift away from the student party culture that is escalating dangerously on and around your campus. I understand what you say about what the university stands for and what you believe in and your branding, but your branding is what you are telling the world about yourself. Reputation is what everyone else is saying, and your reputation is not great. So I hope that we can support you in these moves, but I really do hope that the university does step up.
Thank you. And Mayor Jaworski, last call, this is it.
Good. No, no question, just, you know, as one of the founders of the task force, thanks everybody for, for participating. And I think the really, the words that stick out to me are actually some of Candace's words, borrowed time. And that's something I think we all feel as members of the task force, is that there's probably, not a week goes by, never mind St. Patrick's Day being one week of the year, not a week goes by that we're not actively working on it, I'm not thinking about it. People say, what do you lose sleep on, about, lose sleep about as mayor? And this is really the one key thing of terms of, we are on borrowed time here. You look at the stats that, and thank you Chief Van Valkenburg who's here from the, one of the paramedics. You know, the stats are, we had 52 paramedic transportation to the hospitals last time around, 11 in serious or critical condition. Now, I'm no medical expert, but I'm a math expert, and that's 20%. So 20, 80% of the kids are drunk, 20% are dying. And it's only thanks to our medical expertise, all the efforts are, Fire, Waterloo Fire Rescue, police, getting the paramedics in there, getting the paramedics out of there, getting to hospital, getting to emergency, and helping those 11 survive March 17th, 2019. And so we are truly on borrowed time. But I, I think what is, is really sticking out is it's really all hands on deck. We're trying to navigate a problem, but we really need all hands on deck. And I think that that's where citizens like Candace and Mike can come out here and speak and really speak, I believe, on behalf of, of citizens. We need the professors involved. We need the high school teachers involved. We need everybody involved, parents involved, in terms of dissuading the students that it is an unsafe site. It's not someplace to go. I remember seeing somebody, I remember at State Ceremony, and she had taken her grade school kids to come see the party. And that's just not what we want to see. We don't need extra people there. We are doing a lot of things, not only at the task force, what we saw in the report, but certainly other things in terms of lobbying the provincial government, trying to get things changed, trying to do surge pricing on tickets. And, but what really sticks out to me is a note I got, I received the night after the, what's now an arson on the street there, is from a student at 7:30 in the morning from Laurier saying, you know what, this has got to stop. I don't, I, I don't want this. And I'm going to be meeting with that student coming up, along with Commissioner Dykstra. But you look at that, we look at that issue as being 1,000 people were there. Well, how many people are we, you know, are we, are under arrest or under investigation or whatever? It's a small handful. A tiny, tiny number of instigators are really responsible. So in terms of, and it came up earlier, in terms of painting all the students or that, you know, we're really talking about a small number of students. A large number of observers, granted, but a small number of students who are starting some of these things. And it takes an event like we saw Shinerama on Saturday where so many students were out doing so much good, following in the footsteps of Counselor Bodley and his juggling act, that, you know, we're really seeing that there is the good in this vast, vast majority of students. And I think that the silent majority, they will start to speak up. And I truly think that we'll work together with VP Jason Coolman, who I think is still here, Jason, and to try and bring out that along with the Federation of Students or the Laurier Students Union, or whatever Federation of Students is called, UW now, to bring that out to say, you know, we really don't like these types of events. It is, we just can't continue to have them. And to frown upon the few instigators that there are and to avoid that, that aspect of going to the events and seeing what's going on, to stay away, just as some students, as we heard tonight from David McMurray, are deciding to stay away on that weekend. I really think that the, and then even other events, I saw Kay here earlier, Kay's still here, the Maccab barbecue, McGregor Albert Neighborhood BBQ for the students and just bringing that community together where the neighbors are part of the students, bring as many as we can. I know we all participate as, as councillors there, one of the fire rescue comes out, but to build that camaraderie amongst the neighborhood and try and tell people, you know, you don't do this to your neighbors. You don't do this in the community. You certainly don't do the things that we heard from, from Mike, that he has to deal with in his, in his, on his property. What else? And finally, you know, Chief Larkin, Chief Van Valkenburg, Chief Heptich, Shane Turner of Bylaw, VPs David McMurray and Jason Coolman, all of you have employees here. And the employees, that's their workday, next Tuesday, March 17th. And, you know, we really have to, as employers ourselves, we all have to care for those employees. So it's the public safety, the staff safety, the student safety that we really have to be worried about. The McGregor School, having students and teachers there, they really have to be on their game because that's a day that we want, again, as Candace mentioned, borrowed time, again, as we, as long as we can borrow that time and make sure nothing happens, we buy another day to try and think of a way to, and my hope is still to, to end it, to turn it into something different, to make it very unpopular as, as a thing to do, that you are just, you don't do that kind of thing. And granted, it'll never be 100% for sure, but, you know, backyard parties, small backyard parties, very small backyard parties, we can, we can live with. And, you know, I think that's the key thing. But the ones where, you know, we've changed the bylaws, so if people are playing their music and trying to attract attention to their house party, you know what? We've put in a bylaw that now takes that into account. If we drink on your roof, great, we've had to create a bylaw that now takes that into account, into account. So we've made a lot of things on here, but I think we have tons of expertise here in the community, and I think I have a lot of hope for what this interim report of the task force has given us here today. And I would like to thank the task force for all your efforts.
Pause in council chambers, Mayor.
I can, I can break that law.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. So this report is, the recommendation is for it to be received as information, so can I have someone move that? Mayor Jaworski and Counselor Hamner, any more discussion? All in favor? That's everyone. Thank you. We're almost finished here. There are no formal or informal public meetings, no consideration of notice of motion, no notice of motion, communications and correspondence, I see none. Regional information and correspondence, there is nothing attached to our, our packages. Any unfinished business? I don't think. Any new business? Oh, Mayor Jaworski.
Just a point of note that on Friday, this Friday, Friday, we will have Dell Budd, World War II pilot, being, speaking at a fundraiser held out at Wing 404 on Friday night at 5:30. Tickets still available. A great opportunity to hear somebody who served our country 75 years ago. 100% of ticket sales go directly to help Wing 404 and the veterans, along with cadets in our community.
Anything else? Any questions? I will call for adjournment. Counselor Freeman, Counselor Bonagor, all in favor? Have a good night, everyone.